Okay. Good evening and welcome to the December 7th, 2021 Placerville Planning Commission Meeting. We will go ahead and call the meeting to order at 5:59 PM. And I'll have everyone please stand and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Mr. Painter, I'll go ahead and ask you to call roll.
Member Friend. Present. Vice Chair Gottberg.
Here.
Member Kinney.
Here.
Chair Lepper.
Here.
Member List.
Here.
Okay, great. So now we will go ahead and move on to adopting the consent calendar where we will approve the agenda for tonight's meeting as well as the meetings from our October 19th, 2021 meeting. Do any commissioners have any changes or updates to the minutes or the agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. All in favor by voice vote?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Stay.
Okay. Commissioner List abstains as he was absent from the last meeting. Okay, then next we will go to items of interest. Oh, never mind, we didn't pull any. Items of interest to the public. This is a moment for members of the public to address the commission on matters not on tonight's agenda but within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. Do any members of the public wish to approach the podium and address the commission? Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the items of interest to the public. Move on to communications. Do we have any communications today?
We have none, none for this item and none for the regular agenda.
Okay, great, thank you. And do we have any presentations or educational workshops tonight?
None, with the exception of a presentation for item three tonight.
Fantastic. Well, then we will move right on to item three, which will be the site plan review, 21-02 for 779 Chamberlain Street. Mr. Painter, do you have the report?
I do. Tonight is a request by the Sundred family who live at 779 Chamberlain. That location is within the city's Sacramento Street, Chamberlain Street Historic District. The request tonight involves proposed exterior additions to the residence there at that address. The applicants wish to add two roof dormers to their single-family home. Both dormers would be visible from Chamberlain, with one along the front or south elevation and one along the east elevation. Each dormer would have concrete roof tiles that match the existing roof material of the home. The dormer walls will be finished using stucco to match the stucco used along the lower floor of the home. The front dormer would have two divided light windows hung side by side. The right dormer would have one divided light window. This request is before the commission, as most commissioners know, because when there is an exterior modification to a building within a historic district, when those modifications are visible from the street, then it is the planning commission that must approve the site plan review before an applicant can come and pull a building permit for that construction. And the alterations that are, as I mentioned, are visible from the street. And so per sections 1049 and 10410 of City Code, the commission is required to review and consider approval before that building permit is issued. The criteria the commission uses when evaluating modifications to buildings within the historic district, as I mentioned, are 10410, section of City Code, and subsection B, that's the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. And also, the city's Development Guide is also utilized when an evaluation of a request such as this takes place. Now, staff's evaluation of the request begins on page three of the staff report and concludes on page eight. Staff finds that the request is analyzed, is consistent with the general plan design element, it is consistent with the site plan review criteria under City Code Section 1049, as well as the applicable guidelines within the city's Development Guide. Staff therefore recommends the commission take the action laid out beginning on page nine, making necessary findings that support the conditional approval of Site Plan Review 21-02. And then staff requests that the commission formally approve the application, subject to the conditions in Attachment 1, or as modified by the commission. The Sundreds are in the audience tonight, and they do have a PowerPoint presentation for your review and consideration tonight. There have been no public comment as of yet regarding this project. That concludes my staff report.
Okay, great, thank you so much. Do any commissioners have questions for staff on the application tonight?
Yeah, I have, I have one. In their report, at the top, it says 779 Cumberland Street Historical District Review Application. The 1, 2, 3, 4th paragraph down, they're quoting the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation and Guidelines for Rehabilitation. The last sentence, they kind of chopped pieces out of this, but it says, "cutting new entrances or windows on secondary elevations." My understanding from the report is that this is a frontal addition and not a secondary. Any guidelines on that?
Can you refer me to the page number that you are referencing?
Well, there isn't a page. It's in their staff report and the applicants, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. I would save those questions for the applicant. The staff had no preparation of this document. This is a representation of the applicant's request.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
Kind of a general question. I understand that we are going to have Peter Wolf under contract or advising the city on our-
Volunteer.
Volunteer. Yeah, volunteer, volunteer. Is this the type of project that he will be involved with to provide advice and input? As I was reading this, I thought this might have been something that Peter would look at.
Peter, we've approached Peter to assist with the preparation of accessory dwelling unit-
Ah, okay.
-plan sets.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. I will go ahead and welcome the applicants up to the podium for their presentation now.
Sure. Thank you very much. Happy to walk through. I did provide a presentation, and if it's probably a little overkill, but I'm happy to walk through and discuss how we think this project aligns with both the intent and letter of what the city's trying to do. If you would permit me, I can go over to the laptop and drive that presentation.
Yes, sounds good.
Thanks.
I realize you're not familiar with the laptop, but you know how to get into Jackson's time to presentation.
I think so, yeah. So just some background in this house that we were able to learn. Really excited, actually, moving here and getting-
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. Is it possible that we could get, do we have a lighting specialist?
Not a specialist.
Or technician? Or a volunteer?
You might have to add that to your title.
Okay, so much, I'm sorry for the interruption, but that's so much, that's so much better.
No, that's fine. I'm glad you get to appreciate it in its full capacity, you know, putting some work into it. So the house was built in 1931. As noted, it's a distinctive brick structure with stone landscaping walls that go back, you know, decades. Mature fruit trees and nut trees on the property. The inside of the house has original wood floors and wood windows and a distinctive concrete porch that wraps around that kind of second level of the house. Within the house, though, the existing bedrooms are small, many of them, but small each one, without walk-in closets. Some of them don't have any closets at all, which is typical for that early 30s period. And all the rooms share bathrooms. So our plan, then, is to develop the third floor of this house, which sits underneath that top-level roof, to create a master suite, to bring the property up to date with current market standards by providing an en suite bathroom, large walk-in closets, and a nice master area. The room, and I'll show a picture of that, the attic, is actually designed with a space already built in for something to go in there, but it lacks windows, so it has no way to bring in light or breezes into that upper floor. And that's our request, is to add these dormers to the existing roof line so that we can add windows to that upper floor and turn that into a master suite, upgrading just the level of the property and creating a place that will be just great for us long-term. Because that is, and so this is the look of what that would be from an elevation standpoint. And you saw the picture of the house earlier, so it's very simple. Yeah, so Smith is the, he's actually my uncle, Lowell Smith, who's lived in the area for 75, well, probably 80 years now, I don't know. And he's, so we would be using his services as well as my wife's father, who is also a local resident, to do the construction and, you know, final engineering for the design. So that's who's the, where the plans are from. Did he? Oh, see, some local connections. There you go, yeah.
He's my neighbor, too.
Oh, nice. Yeah, Lowell Smith, great guy. And so this, pulling from that, the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation, we pulled this quote to which we thought supported what we wanted to do. We want a historic building. Exterior and interior alterations to a historic building are generally needed to assure its continued use. And while the home is functional, it does limit its ability to function in the way that we'd like without having the, you know, the amenities that would come with a master suite versus the more separated room style that it has now. Feel free to interrupt me with questions as I go through this, so. So in additional guidelines from that Standards for Rehabilitation, and I've highlighted the ones that I thought were important, they recommend additions do not damage or obscure character-defining features. And the features of this house, being the brick, that beautiful porch, the incredible landscaping, the very distinctive, you know, concrete tiles on the roof, those would all stay. We wouldn't change the materials of the roof or any of those other distinguishing features. And what is not recommended is changing the configuration of a roof so that the historic character is diminished. And I wanted to highlight that part, because we are asking to change the configuration of the roof, but to do so in a style that fits that time period and uses all the existing materials and colors from the existing house so that when it's completed, it should look like it's been there all the time, is the intent. So, and we look forward to then having a home that we can have our children for the holidays, we can make it a place we can stay for many decades here in town, bringing, you know, character and us becoming a part of this community. So we hope to do that. So then I took some time to walk through those historical district standards for building alterations so that you can hear my arguments based upon the 10 different standards. And I'll go through this quickly, because I could spend a lot of time, but, you know, hopefully this is pretty clear. So the property will be used as it was historically intended as a single-family home with those additions, doesn't change that. Standard two, the historical character of the property will be retained, that is our intent, using those existing materials. An interesting thing that we discovered, the concrete roof tiles, and this is a closer picture of those tiles, were actually built by a company that formed in the early 1970s. So the tiles themselves may only be about 50 years old at most. I'm not sure what kind of roof it had before those tiles were on it, but since then, it's become a very distinctive feature of this home in the neighborhood, and so we want to keep that. We actually found a cache of these tiles in a small enclosure underneath the property and on the property itself. So if we don't have enough removing the tiles from the existing roof, we have about 250 backup tiles sitting at the property, you know, that were the same exact tiles that are on the roof. So we will have no problem maintaining the tile structure, which is nice. That was a, that was a great find. These dormers that we use, you can see the style that this will be, that kind of hip dormer. They exist in the neighborhood here. There's a couple of, four examples, there's others, we picked these four, of other homes that are using that same kind of hip dormer to provide light to those upper floors. Standard four, the, anything that's become or gained significance will be retained and preserved, and as I mentioned, those, we will keep those tiles, we'll keep the brick, we're going to match the stucco color on the exposed parts of those dormers, so we do want to keep that. As you drive up the street, here's where the house sits, just so you can see that look, and you can see that large roof, expansive roof. Actually, having the dormers on there should add a nice, you know, a nice feature to the roofs themselves, but that will change that approach look. We like to think it's a positive change, but I wanted to make sure that you saw the impact as you drive up Chamberlain and what that will be. That is not my cat, but it is adopted.
I would say posing in both pictures for you.
That cat is, it followed me around the entire photo shoot, it's in all the pictures.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Because we're talking about one dormer, but the report says you're adding two.
Two, correct.
You are adding two.
So as you see in this picture, when you're driving up westward on Chamberlain Street, that's the one where you can see the porch, the first picture, that's the one, oh, you have a laser? That's cool.
Yeah, one would be facing-
Yeah, so one is facing the drive up underneath, you know, so it's on top of the porch. And then the other one, as you drive past the house, this is looking backwards up Chamberlain Street, it would be on that side facing the street, so both those options.
I can help.
Please.
Yeah, one is proposed here-
Yep.
And one is proposed here. So maybe this elevation will have one, and this one on the across.
Yes. Yep.
Thank you.
Taking advantage of the greenery.
For the record, thank you, Andrew.
Yeah, it's an excellent demonstration. And from a view standpoint, also, it'll be great, because we'll get the greenery of both the, you know, the trees, the fruit trees that are on our yard to the east, as well as the hill that's on the north, or the south side of Chamberlain to the south. So it'll be great views and bring in some light all year round, too. And again, I'll go through these quickly. We'll use the same tiles, so the distinctive materials will remain. This is the inside of the house. It actually has a very fine-built staircase leading up into the attic. It's probably the nice, one of the nicer staircases in the property, going to that unfinished upstairs room. So it really has been, and the intent, we think, of previous owners, previous developers, workers, whoever's done this, to have something up there besides just storage, so. We will preserve that roof tile, so if anything's deteriorated, we'll be updating it. There's no chemical issues that we foresee. We'll be using existing, again, those existing tiles. I don't expect to find any archaeological treasures during that renovation, but we'll be on the watch. The additions, again, as we mentioned, should not destroy any historic features or spatial representations on that property. We're not affecting any of the existing outbuildings, which are really cool, we really enjoy having those, too. It'll just add those, that, you know, bring that light into that upper story, is really the entire intent of what we're doing. And in the future, if someone really didn't like it, I guess they could always remove it, replace the tile, and return the house back to normal. We don't think anybody would like to do that, but it is possible. So thank you for the time. Thanks for letting me walk through this presentation. I'm available for questions.
Okay, great, thank you so much. Can we get the lights back on? Light master? Thank you.
You need to use technical skills again.
You can go ahead and go, I think, probably back to the podium.
They call back, I'll find it.
So thank you for that presentation. Do any commissioners have questions for the applicant based on the presentation?
Yeah, if you'll come back up to podium.
No problem.
I'm going to ask you the question, and I still think they'll end up answering it.
Sure.
And I'm in favor of this. I really like what you're proposing to do, okay? My question is that guidelines that we are asked to follow, and in this case, it says that cutting new windows, entrances or windows on a secondary elevation, and in reality, this is the major or the front elevation. Was that addressed at all? Was anything said to you about that when you made your application?
Other than that we needed to explain how that would, we would be able to maintain the historic nature of the house, use the existing materials, to have any opportunity of this being permitted. You know, if we hadn't have had both the research into the style that would work, as well as maintaining the materials, I don't think we'd be this far along. So that was, that was the intent, although I don't recall any specific request about the primary or secondary, but that's perhaps my inexperience in planning.
Okay, thank you. One more. Nowhere in the drawing does it say the size of the windows. Are you, are you sure that they meet the second egress for fire?
What's that? We do have, we do have the plans, I actually don't know if I brought the, so on the back wall should be the plans that have some of that detail, and we have the entire plans.
It doesn't, it doesn't give us any dimension.
It doesn't actually list the window size?
My concern is you got a nice staircase going down, and, but you have to have a secondary way out of that third floor.
Right, being able to get out those windows. We intend for them to be-
Okay.
Yeah, because it's-
My concern at this point is that, that we don't have to add a height to change the proportions, because we have to add a window.
That provides that much height, right. We don't see these windows as being, you know, long and narrow. Even with the hip dormer coming down, the height of those windows should be, you know, at least three to four feet tall, because of the, it's, the roof, the second, that third story, has at least about 15 feet from the base where the, you know, the subfloor would be and the peak of that roof. So we've got plenty of room to have that dormer come out and still have some pretty sizable sized windows. We expect the south side dormer, for example, to be at least 12 feet wide with windows to match that vertically as well, so. But we don't have it specified, so when we get that, you know, the final plans, we'll make sure that that's specified, that those sizes are large enough for a secondary egress.
Yeah, I assume the Smiths will pick that up before they go on with that.
One of the reasons why we're using them, because they'll catch things like that.
Thank you.
But that's a good question, thank you.
It looks like it might be noted slightly that 8x7 on the east side and 12x7 on the south side are the proposed sizing for the dormer. I'm not sure about the windows.
The entire dormer, correct.
But it doesn't indicate-
It doesn't indicate the window size, just the dormer size.
I follow. Well, I'm sure that you would like to egress in the case of an emergency as well, so that will come into play.
That would be, that would be important for us.
Yeah.
Drop and roll down the roof, yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure there'll be other oversight in addition to our designer.
Absolutely.
So if this, if I can interject, if the project were to be approved, and it turns out that the sizing of the window may need to be larger, I don't know, but if it were, and it is staff's perspective that it would change the overall appearance, then we will bring it back to you for your approval. If we find that it's not substantive, it wouldn't necessarily change how that dormer would look on that elevation, then we have the authority to approve that amendment at the building permit law.
Wonderful, thank you for the clarification. Any other questions for the applicant, commissioners?
I just had one question, because it wasn't specified here, but it looks like it's shown on the drawing. What sort of materials planned to be used for the window frame? Or is a window frame proposed?
We don't have a proposed window frame material yet. We would match the existing exterior frames of the windows. Interior would most likely be wood. Outside, it looks like they've been updated with a storm window front that is more of a vinyl. We don't love it, but it's, we'd probably want to be consistent top to bottom of the house. So while we'd have wood inside, it most likely would be a vinyl exterior.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Any other questions from commissioners?
Just a couple of questions and comments. And actually, thank you for your presentation, because it covered, I think, a couple of the questions that I had. You're right, that was an awesome find of material on the property. Whoever did that is probably accused of being a hoarder. I would say they are a delayed user, and in defense of delayed users around the world, good for them.
You're very grateful.
Are you, however, to the point, are you quite confident you will have enough material to do between what's there and what you're going to be reusing, that you'll be able to do it and be consistent?
According to the, our builder himself, who's actually walked through and done some of the measurements, he may not need to tap into any of that reserve at all, is what he was thinking.
Oh, that's, that's great.
I think that's probably a little optimistic. We may have to use some, but we definitely won't get close to the 200 that we have or so.
That's super. Okay, great. And then I think, I take from your remarks, this is your personal residence?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. And then, did I have one other? No, that's it, great, thank you for the presentation.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from commissioners for the applicant? Okay, you can go ahead and have a seat, we'll let you know if we have any other questions. So next, I will go ahead and open this topic up to public comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to make a comment on this project, proposed project?
Kirk Smith of Placerville, I'm a neighbor. This is a real jewel in the neighborhood, it is for the city. I've been here a long time, and while it's described that the roofing was provided in the 1970s, it's always been that terracotta style, which is still available. Les Frost, the postmaster in the 1950s to 60s, his home on top of the hill has that same kind of terracotta tile roof, and it's still available. If anything, this exceptional presentation probably leaves out some of the very special features that you can see when you drive by Chamberlain. What doesn't show there is that those gutters on the top are copper, solid copper. That's what I'm heard of these days, very expensive. The windows on the Chamberlain side, there's three sets. Two look like they've been replaced at some point. The one on the, on what would be the southeast side is a wonderful arts and crafts style in that there's a couple center panes that are larger, symmetrical, and then smaller ones around it. When it came to this discussion that Mr. List raised about the Secretary, Interior Secretary's guidelines, those are guidelines, and they expressly state they are mandatory for federal properties like Mount Vernon, Monticello, but they're guidelines for the rest of us. And this is aesthetically consistent with the arts and crafts period. It's consistent with homes in that area that are built of wood. There are some buildings that have roofs that are taller than that. They're built during the Depression. We have no way of knowing if those who built it had in mind that when they got the money, they were going to add a room, add a room when they got family, you know, that kind of thing. We don't know. All I know is that putting on the dormers is aesthetically consistent with the arts and crafts style. And when that's described as brick, that's true, but what's significant, I think, is that that's unique. It's brick that was used in that arts and crafts period. It is not like the red stuff you're going to find from the 1800s on Main Street. It's a very special construction, and I'm sure it's available somewhere, but it's the kind of thing you'd see from Frank Lloyd Wright. So many special features about this. They did a wonderful job of presenting it. When he described that garden, that's the way homes were at that time, the larger properties. They had fruit trees and gardens, even though there were nine grocery stores on Main Street. This was one of them, the purity. All the way down to the east end of Placerville Drive, there were nine grocery stores you could walk to, or they would make deliver. So it's a beautiful building, they've made a great contribution. I knew the Hennigsons, you know, when they had it, I assume they were the people who built it. If that name's not familiar, those are the people who were in the cement business, and they had the property that's now known as Home Depot. So, and I knew Buzzy Hennigson, went to school with her. It's a beautiful building, it's going to be a credit to the community, I encourage it enthusiastically. Last thing is, when it comes to those windows, because those windows are going to allow you to have egress. I know, because I live in an arts and crafts house that has those dormers already built into it. But the thing I'd ask, and I'd leave it up to their discretion, is to make it purely consistent, because when we're talking about vinyl, aluminum, or I don't care if it's titanium, double-pane windows filled with argon are available in all kinds of shapes, sizes, and materials. They can be made of wood, and they can be made where they're in four sections. So when I had my- So when I had my house done 15 years ago, the contractor said it has to be double pane windows. But what I didn't know at the time is that it could have had it in those four sections, which was typical of that period. So now I have to retrofit and come in and put vinyl strips to make it look like it was in sections, as it was true for that period. I support the project.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate your input. Okay, any other members of the public wish to comment on this project? Okay, seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public comment portion of this review and return the matter to commissioners for discussion and action. Any comments or...
Just a couple of comments. First of all, I, I support the project, and I really appreciate Mr. Smith's comments. A little more brevity perhaps would be appreciated, but still, I, I enjoy what he has to say. Interesting, he kind of talked about the, these guidelines being guidelines and not mandatory. This project, for whatever reason, just struck me as how onerous those guidelines can be. And while I certainly value the preservation of historic structures, I really do, you know, there's, it's, it can be really difficult to comply. We're fortunate with what the applicant is, is bringing forth, but they are very difficult. And I think we need to keep that in mind when we are approaching projects of this type. I support the project with no additional requirements or alterations.
Thank you very much for your input. I'll note that I really appreciated the, the depth of the presentation and the detail and the effort for material reuse, I think really fits in line with our goals around the historic district preservation and continuity. So I really do appreciate you taking that both into consideration and prioritization. Anyone else? No? Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion on the topic?
Sure. I will make a motion to approve the project entering staff's report, applicant's seminal patches and exhibits into the public record, and making the findings A through D listed in the staff report, and conditionally approve the conditions of approval provided in attachment one of the staff report.
Great.
I second.
Okay, great. Can you call roll Mr. Painter?
I'll go from left to right. Member Fran?
Aye.
Member List?
Aye.
Chair Lepper?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gutberg?
Aye.
Member Keeney?
Aye.
Okay, great. So your project has been approved. There's a reminder that there is a 10-day calendar appeal period for planning commission decisions, which can be made in writing to the City Clerk at City Hall. So good luck with your project. Okay, next, do we have any continued items tonight? None? Okay. Any new business to attend to?
No new business.
No new business, okay. Do any commissioners have any matters for staff or any announcements from staff, commissioners?
First, I want to announce that the Christmas parade is just incredible, and, and the community spirit was just amazing. I brought with me this evening the copy of the Realtors and Smart Growth document that was in our packet on Common Ground. And there's an article that's talking about, of course, the, the shortage of available housing, shortage of affordable housing, right? And then on page 23, and there's a lot of discussion here about R1 zoning. And on page 23, there's a, there's a quote, "Many planning leaders advocate for, for doubles, triplexes, low-rise condos and similar housing in areas zoned for only single-family housing." And this is becoming kind of a trumpet that I'm hearing. Sacramento, I think, has begun to, to look at this. And then juxtaposition that with the title of the publication, which is called On Common Ground. And so this is going to come before the city, and I think ultimately before the planning commission in months and years to come. There's tremendous pressure for this. And I would submit that the common ground, I think, is that we all agree that there is a terrible shortage of affordable housing, right? It's really difficult, and, and different solutions and out-of-the-box thinking are going to be required. I think what's lost and where there is not common ground is that when we start putting in duplexes and triplexes and other things, right in the middle of established neighborhoods that are R1, that's not common ground. That's destructive. It destroys the integrity of neighborhoods. So as a possible solution, I would encourage perhaps the city to look at for future developments that if we have to set aside or identify areas for duplex, triplex, it's another high-density, that those be set together and not right in the middle of neighborhoods, because I think that's destructive. I think we can meet both objectives. Maybe we have a smaller amount of R1 zoning than what would be allowed, but in order to allow for these others, but you can't simply place these in, in the middle of existing neighborhoods. I know some legislation has been passed and signed by the governor, which essentially would, would allow for these things, these types of, of structures, duplexes and triplexes to go in, into R1 existing neighborhoods. One exemption in there is historic district. For the record, I would request the city declare the entire city a historic district and exempt it from that legislation. And I know that's kind of a radical way to approach this, but, but the legislation itself is radical, and its potential to destroy neighborhoods in this community, in this small community, are very, very real. And so we need creative solutions that can meet the need, because I think, again, we all agree the need is there, but we need to do it in a way that still preserves the neighborhoods that we have. So, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Any other matters that commissioners would like to raise to staff today? Okay, seeing none. Staff, do you have any response or other matters, if that's just a down-the-line thing?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a few items. One thing I do want to respond to the comments made by Commissioner Fran. We are aware of, of both, I think it's AB 9 and 10, and I, I can't recall if one's AB or SB or Senate bill, but we're going to be studying those. We're, we're actually a little bit behind. We have a draft amendment to our ordinance that regulates accessory dwelling units, and we have yet to bring that to you. We're going to hold off, and we're going to see if that draft ordinance now needs to be tailored with respect to AB 9 and 10, which of course, one has to do with allowing up to four units on a single-family lot, and the other one is looking at a property owner being able to subdivide their property by right. So of course, you can get maybe up to eight units, but that'll be all based on the constraints of the individual lot by size and other constraints. But we need to look closely at that. Staff understands your concerns about putting it in the middle of the neighborhood and basically changing the character of the neighborhood, and I think that's done by, which could be a tremendous intensification and density of use, of the residential use. So, again, and maybe Mr. Painter can add, because I, I had asked him with his limited time to maybe examine a little more in, in detail what the requirements are, and then highlight those, and we were going to discuss that. But to what extent does the city have to impose setbacks and some of the other development constraints? So if you have a very, very large lot and you put some additional units on it, from a density perspective, it may not be so apparent, but if you're looking at shoehorning in additional units and they're able to waive setbacks, then it could be a problem, but...
Pierre, if I might?
Sure.
One of the things I find particularly onerous about that legislation is that there's no public review. It, it's almost a mandatory. If, if, if a developer comes, says, "I want to do this," there's almost zero discretion on our part, and, and it's, it's potentially very, very dangerous.
Yeah, it's almost by fiat. It, it, it just reminds me of the road we've been on with our accessory dwelling unit changes that have been problemated through the state, where, you know, I mean, I can still recall many years ago, they called it the granny flat, and it was limited to 600 square feet, and then it was increased to 1,200 square feet, which is really more of a small house.
Bigger than mine.
And then they, you know, they made it to where an accessory dwelling unit is by right, and you can, you can convert an existing structure, even a carport, into an ADU, and then it limits our ability to impose setbacks. So if you have an old garage or something that's right up to your neighbor, they can convert that to an ADU, and the city has no discretion to tell them, no, they still have to meet the building code, of course. So those are the kinds of things we are dealing with. So I really appreciate your, your, your comments, Commissioner Fran. It's just the state feels that the single-family residential zone is archaic and probably needs to go away in order to meet our housing needs. So we will keep you informed. Any changes to the codes will come before you, before we bring it to the city council for approval and, and adoption of any code changes. So...
Thank you for that clarification.
But thank you for concern. We're, we're also concerned. Let's see, what else? I just want to remind the commission that on December the 21st, you will be considering what was formerly called the Gateway Hotel. That's at Jakeway and Smith Flat Road, and they will be basically, hopefully, building a hotel utilizing the existing foundations. So they've gone away from the Hampton Inn, which was going to remove those, those two foundations, and this goes more to the model of the, you know, the two buildings with a portica share. And the front of the hotel now will face Jakeway as opposed to facing the, the hillside in Highway 50. It really wasn't going to be visible, so we're happy about that. But it's sort of a, let's just say, a little more modernistic. It's, it's an Alpine design, but again, we'll, we're, we're trying to finalize the staff report and hopefully have that to you shortly. But that'll be a, an exceptional project for you to review.
It's great.
It's been through us a number of times. I think that's the, maybe the seventh hotel that's been proposed in that sign, it's some kind of iteration, I, I think, over the years. Let's see. Staff received a letter from the State Department of Housing and Community Development. Of course, you recall going through that arduous process of updating our housing element, and it finally went to city council. The city council approved it. We then sent the adopted housing element to HCD for their review, and then we had some back and forth where they wanted us to do some changes to it to bring it more in line with what the state wants to see, so that we can provide for affordable housing for all economic categories. So we thought we were, we were there. We were limited in scope in terms of any of the changes we made, they were, for the most part, we considered non-substantive, so we didn't want to be required to come back to hearing. But I think we received three basic comments by letter, so we're evaluating those. We're looking to see if there's a way to deal with it, with those comments, so that we don't have to go through and bring the element back to the planning commission and, and back to the city council for readoption. But basically, and if you haven't received the letter, we will certainly get you a copy of that letter, so you can read it, and feel free to contact staff if you want to discuss the contents of that letter. But unfortunately, they are stating that our housing element does not meet the minimum requirements of state housing law. So I'm trying to think if there was something else. I hope all of you will be here, if you can, on December the 21st, so we can honor city planner Andrew Painter.
Which you are so happy he's still here today.
We are too.
I will add, we're disappointed in HCD's letter.
Yeah.
You could probably hear from his voice inflection, we're, we're kind of dumbstruck by, by it. So, but we think there's, there's a way that they'll learn from what we want. Hopefully, we'll get what we want and not have to amend it as drastically as I think they envision.
Right.
Which may have to come back to you for, for recommendation and then to council for readoption. That's, we're hoping that's not going to be that severe, but we'll see. We'll, we'll need to have that conversation with them sometime.
Right, yeah. So hopefully we can get that resolved.
We hope they're reasonable people. We think they are.
Yeah.
Yeah, interesting to see the letter, just to see what their issues were, to kind of get an idea of what they're really honing in on for future stuff, too.
Yeah, we apologize. We, we should have...
That's okay.
...made copies, and we, we could have hand-delivered them to you, but we'll, we'll get you copies of that letter.
All good? Okay.
And I think that's about it, unless I'm missing something, Andrew?
Yes, we, yeah, my last day will be right after this meeting, on the 21st. But I do want to tell you, we do have things in the pipeline that I won't be here for, but Mr. Evas will. There's, there's a couple that are very close to getting to you, and one of which happens to be another hotel project, not a new one. It's the existing one on Broadway near Tractor Supply. They want to do some remodel of that in terms of interior space, and you probably noticed all the landscaping's gone, so that'll be coming back before you for your review, the signage. They haven't quite finalized that, so that might be a carry-on item for the future, but perhaps in January, maybe when that one might come through. Yeah, I forgot about the ADU. That, that could come, well, anytime you want to take it, but that's all I've got.
Another day.
I will add one more thing. This is just an aside. I remember my first presentation, it happened to be a historic district review, isn't that funny? It was a project on, it is a project, on Pleasant Street, near the intersection with Bedford. It was a garage, if I recall. Anyway, it's funny how, circle.
Absolutely. I love that they still stick in your brain. Sure, there's many. All right, good. Well, if there are no further matters from you guys?
I have two things.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yep.
Just, just real quick.
Yes.
While we're talking about hotels, staff has been in discussions with a new property owner that, and it's a group. They purchased that property behind Office Max, Office Depot?
Oh.
Whatever that, In-N-Out Burger, there's that big property about, up there on, on the knoll, and they're looking at putting in a dual-brand hotel on that site.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Good.
So, and I've never seen that concept, but I guess that's sort of a common thing that hotels do now.
Dual-brand.
They will, you'll see two different brands, basically utilizing some, some of the space as well.
It's like A&amp;W in Kentucky Fried Chicken doing...
Something like that, yeah.
I was going to say Taco Bell Pizza Hut, but yeah.
Very similar, right? Taco Bell Pizza, very similar.
Right, except you would put a, you know, a little dining hall in between them, and they could share that dining hall. It's kind of similar to that, so...
Good.
Is this the...
Yeah, so I just wanted to pass that along as well.
Is this a site that had a proposal before, or is it a slightly different property? I remember sometime back there was a proposal...
That was down Fornie Road. Yes, it is, it is slightly different.
It's the same property, just different?
Right. There was a, there was, and it came before the, the planning commission was approved. That was the Fornie Road Hotel that's between the billboards. So it's just south of Highway 50, down in that, in that depressed area there, and never happened, but yes, that was the other hotel site.
Because this is a new one.
This is a new one. This is the one up on the hill. Yes, beautiful views, so...
That site was entitled, it's actually Plan Development.
Right.
So, Member Fran may remember it. It was, it involved really two different projects on two different sites. One was a townhouse-type concept on the site that, that Director Evas is talking about.
Right.
They were going to share the pump station...
Yes.
...down near the hotel site that he's talking about between the two billboards. They kind of both needed each other.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, more detail to come?
First of all, if someone could put some more quarters in the Christmas tree light machine, because the lights went out. Well, let's, let's lengthen it a little bit. And then on a somber note, I would request that we adjourn tonight's meeting, and remember it's Pearl Harbor Day, which is today, and we reflect it in the minutes.
Thank you for that. We can go ahead and have a brief moment of silence in a memoriam of those who gave the ultimate sacrifice during Pearl Harbor. Okay. Thank you very much. Really appreciate you bringing that up. And with that, we will go ahead and adjourn at 6:48 PM.